At this moment, I will read this request. It's a request by Hans Wilson and Associates, agent for Vent LLC, Vivanti at Puntagorda Property Owners Association, Inc., Palmiles Condominium Development LLC, and Vivanti at Puntagorda Condominium Association, Inc., owners for a special exception pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 16.8, Puntagorda Code, to construct a private marina with up to 264 private dock slips for the sole use of the residents of the Vivanti Development to create a navigable channel connecting to the Peace River through vacant common area of the north end of the development, and to install a seawall along the lands abutting the proposed channel since none of these activities are considered permitted uses or structures but may be approved as special exception.
So can you just recap again what's happening here?
All right. First of all, I want to just note for the record that even though it refers to a private marina in the title, this is not a marina in the sense as it is defined in our code. And so a special exception is not required for the docking facilities, which is really what is being requested. And a little bit of background is that the applicant submitted a plan for a special permit for that docking facility, which is another action that would need to be taken down the road. But that plan modified the plan both in location and number of the docking facilities that was as part of this original application. We notified the applicant of that issue, the fact that it needed to be reviewed for the potential additional impacts that were associated with that revised plan, and gave the applicant the option of either withdrawing the plan that was submitted with the special permit request and then allowing us to move forward with the application as it was originally presented for the special exception, or to continue the special exception hearing in order to present the plans and support that they would like to have reviewed at the same time as part of the special exception regarding the revised docking facility. So that's where we are procedurally. I'll ask the applicant to confirm that that is what their request is at this time.
Good morning. Rob Burnson, Big W Law Firm. I'm sorry I wasn't sworn in. I have one of the agendas that didn't have the item on here either.
Yeah, they were incorrect over there. I apologize for that. So you still need to be sworn in?
No, I was sworn in.
Okay, okay.
I would concur with what the city attorney indicated. When this application was filed, it was filed by the dock contractor, Hans Wilson. And the docks that they showed initially was conceptual for the original plan because this has to go through all sorts of permitting at the state and federal level where they will determine numbers of docks and things along those lines as well. So it was intended to be conceptual. There's been an evolution of the petition as we've moved forward as to what exactly we're asking for. And so with this, we've been working with the potential interveners to continue this so that we can get all of our ducks in a row so that when the council hears it, they're hearing what it is we're actually proposing, not something as conceptual as it originally was intended. And we have some legal issues to clear up with regard to the Lake Association. And so we want all those ducks in a row before we come back before you. So we're therefore asking for an indefinite continuance that we would get back with staff and the interveners when we are prepared to move forward and then select a time that is convenient for everybody.
And since it would be an indefinite continuance, there will be a need for re-advertising and posting. Is the applicant willing to pay for the call?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so we have a request for an indefinite continuance. So should we let, should we open the public hearing now?
No.
Or we can just decide?
No, it's, it's, yes, you may just decide at this point.
Okay, so we, all parties have agreed on a continuance. I'm getting thumbs up. So do I have a motion in that?
I'll make a motion to continue as requested.
Indefinitely and with the re-advertising?
Yes.
Cost to be bear by the applicant?
Yes, second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to grant the continuance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. So we don't close the public hearing? We just keep it open?
Yes.
Okay.
And so when the re-advertising is done, that would also include note, all the same notification that went into the proper notice for the first hearing.
Okay. So when, when you get your ducks in a row, in a row, and it's no longer conceptual, we'll be hearing the real plan that you plan to apply?
Yeah. I would, I would point out that, that it will also need to go back before the planning commission.
The planning commission.
Not if we keep the same, my understanding was if we keep the petition the same, it would not go back before the planning commission.
That is, that is correct, as long as you're not making any change to whatever the potential.
That's our intention to keep.
If you get back to the original.
To have everything match.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Freed up our afternoon. Thank you. Okay, I work off the computer now because we did not have the right. Okay, so next, we have no public hearing required on a second reading and a resolution, but we do have time for you to comment on those two things if you would like. So now would be the time to comment on GA 12-16, which is an ordinance, the wastewater collection and treatment.
Annexation.
Annexation agreement that we heard at the last meeting, and also the resolution for the historic resource survey. So if anybody would like to speak on those two items, annexation agreement and the historic resource survey, now would be the time. Okay, seeing none, we will hear GA 12-16.
Yes, this is the second reading of an ordinance which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Puntagorda, Florida, amending Section 1 of Ordinance Number 1363-03, adopted December 3, 2003, creating an area outside of the corporate limits of the City of Puntagorda wherein the city may provide a potable water supply and distribution and wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal for domestic, municipal, and industrial uses, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Tom, you're up.
I would like to move approval of GA-12-16.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve GA 12-16. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Congratulations, Tom.
Yeah, that was a great idea.
You've got your ordinance.
Right.
We'll have to put a sub-note in there, the Tom Kavanaugh ordinance.
Next is a resolution which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Puntagorda, Florida, adopting the City of Puntagorda Historic Resource Survey, September 2016, and providing an effective date.
Any comments on this resolution?
No.
We have a short presentation?
Very short presentation.
Thank you.
Mitchell Austin, City of Puntagorda, Urban Design Division. The city has been in the process of conducting a historic resource survey. This is an update. Historic Resources Survey is designed to document historic and cultural resources. It does update the Florida Master Site File, which is the statewide list of historic and cultural resources. Three previous surveys have been conducted in the city. The last one was in 2003, 2004, and covered the area illustrated on the map in red. The current survey, which was begun in 2012, utilizing staff resources, not outside consultants, covers the entire area within the city limits. Did a basic GAS analysis to figure out which structures in the city were built prior to 1966, and we identified over 300 structures that had not been documented previously.
Wow.
From that first rough draft analysis, we identified some target areas for actual field survey work, which does include areas of Puntagorda Isles for the first time. The documentation that's required is a state-certified historic structure form, survey form, map documentation for each individual property, as well as photographic evidence of those properties. There are 307 sites that were surveyed as, as part of this. The vast majority were residential. There were 38 non-residential structures identified. The period of significance was 1954 through 1965. There were 23 structures surveyed that were built prior to 1954, and those were, occurred primarily in areas outside previously surveyed areas. So those are your new captures. Architecturally, there were four styles that predominated. Frame vernacular, which in the post-World War II period with air conditioning, responded less to the natural environment, so you see the elimination of front porches. We start seeing masonry vernacular buildings, again, primarily without porches. As with most of suburban America, we see a proliferation of ranch-style homes in this period. And then of primary interest in this period is the architectural style of mid-century modern. Mid-century modern is really the, the historic nomenclature for what we all know of as modernism that occurred in the middle of the 20th century, based in America on the international style from Europe and elsewhere internationally. Here in Florida, particularly in South Florida, the mid-century modern style is, unlike most other modern architecture, heavily influenced by the natural environment. You tend to see things like brise-alays and screening and other exterior wall features that, that help shield the building from the sun, which is atypical elsewhere. So the, the two predominant schools are sort of the Miami modernism, and then you have the Sarasota School of Architecture, which isn't an actual academic institution, just a collection of architects that were practicing modernism just to our north and throughout southwest Florida. I do want to make one note here before I get to any questions. Most of the dock, structures documented in this survey were from the production, construction environment that dominated the construction industry in America from the latter half of the 20th century through the present. The construction typologies are best based much less on regional vernaculars and traditions of architecture and construction, and more on building the most structures most inexpensively with, within the shortest possible timeframe. This has resulted in a large volume of structures in the post-World War II era that individually have very little in the way of lasting architectural or historic value. It is therefore recommended that in future, historic resources in the city be documented on a case-by-case basis instead of in broad-sweeping surveys as this project.
So my main question is, once these are identified, like say in the Isles, these houses are, what, 50 years old now? What does that mean to property owners?
Under our current codes, and this, this may recommend additional code changes based on the desires of the community, and our, is that certificate of appropriatenesses are required for all properties listed on the Florida Master Site File under the current code. So this means an additional level of review for all of those structures. The largest potential impact is on demolition permits because the codes do permit the Historic Preservation Advisory Board to delay the issuance of those permits for up to 18 months.
Kim?
Okay, so if you need to have a certificate of appropriateness, like I have a property that needs a new roof, not a total new roof, but a part of it, so I have to pay $75 to...
For any, there are two tiers within the certi-
I mean, I don't care about me, I'm just saying if everybody-
There are two tiers for the certificate of appropriateness application. 99% of certificate of appropriatenesses are free, so they're no charge. They run with the building permit, and that's for any additions, modifications, maintenance, any type of exterior repairs or modifications to the structure. The, the, two, three things that, that really require the fee, and it is $50, and that's heard by the Historic Preservation Advisory Board, is if you intend to move a structure, demolish a structure, or add signage to a commercial property.
Oh, okay, okay. Then I misunderstood that. I just wanted to make sure if we, you know, incorporated hundreds of homes, that if they needed a new roof, they weren't having to pay-
No, there are no additional fees for those types of certificates of appropriateness, but it is additional steps that the applicant has to undertake.
Sure, which is fine.
So do I understand correctly that if somebody wants to purchase one of these in the Isles section that you've identified, a 1950s-type house, if they want to just go in and take the house down and, and build a new one in its place, they have to go through hoops, so to speak?
The way the current code is written, one recommendation that I have for that, and going back to my, my comments, that most of these structures individually have very little in terms of historical or architectural merit, is that on the Historic Resources Form, there's a, a section about the opinion of significance. So that's whether the opinion of the reviewer is that those structures are historically significant or not. One modification that we could easily make to the certificate of appropriateness application process is that whether the threshold for requiring a certificate of appropriateness is historical significance. So is it significant or not? And if it's not, even though it's 50 years old, it would be exempted from that historic, certificate of appropriateness process. That would probably be the cleanest way to do it. That way, we're not impeding people who want to take down buildings of no merit. Buildings that do have merit would, would be subject to further review.
So who would be offering that opinion?
The opinion is, is certified on the forms, so city staff has undertaken that opinion of significance. And I will say that the vast majority of the 307 properties surveyed were deemed to be insignificant, or not significant. They're not insignificant.
So what do we gain by adding them? Do we, what do we gain by adding them to the master file?
It's part of the documentation process. Once you've looked at something, you've proved that it's not historically significant. It's just the way the process was set up by the state of Florida, based on the national model, you know, many decades ago.
Gary?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so being somebody who lives on Maria Court, and fortunately, these issues were, were solved by Charlie for me. And so I, I did build a new house, but these homes are not, God forbid we should have another Charlie, they're not safe structures to be in.
Agreed.
I know how mine exploded, and a number of them on my block did, and the ones who survived all took very severe damage because of the codes at the time. But there's two houses that are relatively unmodified, for example, that show up in the original brochures for the development of Puntagorda Isles. Is that considered, do I have to tell my neighbor that they have a significantly historical significant structure? And I might also add that when I bought my property, I really bought it for the price at a lot because these buildings are not considered, from a market standpoint, particularly valuable.
Correct.
They have use, and that's their value, but they don't have a marketable value, really.
Correct, and, and that, those considerations were, were definitely part of the, the opinion of significance. Certainly, you have, again, most of these structures were production, construction. They're just trying to get the most number of homes out, produced in the shortest amount of time, so there's not much value there.
So I'm really just asking the question, do my neighbors, if they want to gentrify my block or, or Donna, are they going to have a significant issue because of they were the first two blocks in Puntagorda Isles?
Under the current unmodified code, unfortunately, city staff would have to require certificate of appropriateness for those structures 50 years or older at this time.
But you can change that, Gary.
Yes.
Or you can request, you know?
Yeah.
Correct.
Bring it to council.
Nancy?
Yeah, I, I'm listening to this conversation, and I'm sitting here thinking, what kind of red tape are we creating for these residents?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I can, on one hand, I can say, having worked with Team Parkside, and there is something to be said for the Mackel Brothers and what they, and that kind of, it's part of the history of Charlotte County. So one could say, this is part of the history of, of Charlotte County as well and Puntagorda. On the other hand, we've got these structures that, it's like, you know, I think of, when I think of historic, I think of the historic district, and I think of the, something that really is like back to the Victorian era, and you know, so how quickly do we-
Are you requesting we bring a change?
Yeah.
I mean, I, yeah, I'm in, I mean, I just, I don't feel comfortable. And how would a potential purchaser know that they, they are looking at one of these identified houses that possibly our staff could say, oh, yeah, no, we really want to keep that one?
Yeah.
You know?
I, I was actually going to say something when the comments were done, but, and it is, it is a real problem because I've been involved in, in other jurisdictions representing buyers who were not aware that the houses in question had been designated by that jurisdiction as having historic significance, and, and sometimes, just a house being 50 years old, by their definition, is a historic structure that has to go through the process. The problem is that the sellers probably don't know that, that there's a restriction on that house for, for that purpose, and certainly the buyers don't know. So one of the things that you might want to consider, if there's an ordinance revision, is that you kind of have some sort of process where a determination is made that a, a property or structure is historically significant and would require the certificate of appropriateness, and then that determination is recorded so that a prospective buyer, when they do a title search, would, would see that, as I said, because the sellers might not know, and they're not going to be able to disclose that. So that would be generally very helpful to the regulated community.
So then they would be recording, once they had to apply for a certificate of appropriateness, that would be recorded?
No. Once the city makes a determination as to what structures need to go through that process, then, then the city records a document relating to that finding in the public records so that when a title search is done, it will show up.
That is a best practice.
Have we been doing that?
No.
Kim?
This is really a question for Mitchell. Okay, so I know a lot of the areas, when they're being developed, people come in, they build, you know, affordable houses so that they can have some type of subdivision or whatever. And a lot of those houses might fall into that category. But there are homes over there that, which may not be historic significance right now, but 100 years from now, they will be. I mean, these, you know, some of the ones we have in the historic district, maybe they would have been deemed, you know, not, not needed. So, you know, I, I don't think that we should, you know, and I don't think we should just do it by the age of it, but somehow, and I think it might fall to the Historic Preservation Board. I mean, I never have felt that that board had the teeth, if you will, that it needed to be able to really determine through means that you have. I know you do a lot of work with that type of thing. So that, if that board had a little bit more, you know, teeth to it, so they could really be researching that and really saying, this is a historic structure, and this is going to be a certain type of vernacular at this point or whatever, with your, you know, with your guidance, and the state, there's already a lot of regulations for that. So that, you know, someday, PGI will be a historic place, and there are some beautiful homes over there that will be of historic significance at some point. They'll say, oh, this was, you know, the early, you know, 2000s.
The early 1970s.
Yeah. This was 2016, built in 2016, you know?
In the case of my blocks, it was 59 and 60, by the way.
Right.
Yes.
You know, and, I mean, this, to me, this is still, and maybe I'm beating the dead horse here, but it's, it's, these, these lots that are on these two streets that haven't been replaced already, which is probably about two-thirds of them, as Puntagorda Isles gets built out, these are, these are quick-access sailor lots. These are from a, a building, a home, a premier lot. There, there's going to be people that are not going to want to keep these structures. They're not safe.
Right. And, and certainly, from what we've seen on the, on the new home side with, with teardown rebuilds, there's, there's significant number of, of structures that are torn down, lots combined, and, and very large estate-sized homes built on some of these lots. So we would expect that trend to continue, and as that trend actually decreases the number of residents in, in a vulnerable area in terms of subject to coastal flooding, that, that meets another section of goals that the city has. So there's, there's a counterbalance. There's policy issues on both sides of this that need to be considered.
Well, am I still hearing, do you want us to amend this?
Yeah, lots of work to do, guys, lots of work.
And I like Kim's suggestion of involving the Historic Preservation Committee, their participation, because it expands their, their purpose, and I think it's, it could be a valuable resource.
Is there any in-between with this? I mean, without, you know, if they, if we put them on the file, then they have to go through the paperwork, correct?
The way our codes are written right now, yes.
I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that. I just don't.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, maybe we need to, yeah, maybe we need to really drill down and look, look at what we're actually talking about, particularly in the Isles.
A bigger picture.
Yeah.
For the future.
Even though I wanted you to make a short presentation, now it's turned into a much longer presentation, but I just don't, I don't feel comfortable unless I really know what, you know, get a real look at these houses and see if it's the case, yeah.
I mean, I, like I said, I was fortunate because I had my decision made, but if you go into, you know, when, when Charlie hit, you had these many tornadoes inside the greater hurricane, and literally, the, the lot across the canal from me, my lot, and the lot immediately across the street, those houses literally exploded.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the other houses took immense damage. My roof, I still have neighbors that talk to me, and my roof took out more than one of theirs. And, and I just, it's just, I see this very problematic that we need to, that we really should address to make it logical.
Nancy, Duncan?
Staff agrees.
And I think at the same time, the picture that you have on the screen of this mid-century modern home that got renovated, and it's beautiful, and it's, it's a gorgeous example of a mid-century modern home. So there are those instances where there could be the possibility of something that, that might have some architectural significance.
Correct.
So I don't want to ignore that, but on the other hand, just to create red tape, when I know that some of these structures are just sitting there waiting for someone to come along and do something.
And this is an example. They did a great job with that. And just, because Gary, I know what you're saying too, and, and over there, it probably doesn't mean as much to me, the old, because I know the older homes, and they really don't have a lot of historic significance. But my home on Durance is a 1920 home, and it's probably not real safe either in a, in a major hurricane, but, and it has a double lot. I've had people offer, that really just wanted to tear the house down because they could build a big house, and I'm like, oh, no! No, you can't do that there, because that's part of our, I, I mean, I feel that way about it.
But the houses, and the houses on my block are more like Leavittown.
I know, I know, I know.
They don't have that value of, of, of real character.
Right.
I mean, the original house we had had no drywall in it.
Right.
On any of the exterior, it was painted cinder block.
Oh, okay.
Okay? It was really a getaway vacation, wonderful.
Hard to hang pictures on that. Tom?
Yeah, as, as you take this back to the drawing board, you, you may want to consider density issues, transfer of density, and so on, when you're, when you're taking, when you're building, putting one house on two lots, you're, you're losing the density that was, was already in the program, so it might be a good time to incorporate that thinking as well.
And I think, you know, just from this picture, like what you said, this house looks great, but it's very low-lying. I mean, that is a low-lying lot.
Yes, it is.
And so I think, you know, we have so many of those factors that I would just hate to paint this with a broad brush, and then, you know, these people that own the homes that now we've identified them, and so I think we need to drill down.
I think it's a great time. You've been wanting to do this for a long time. Really, you know what I mean? To really get the Historic Preservation Board involved, and I think our community's ready for your vision. You had a vision about this, and I think that, you know, I'll be, I'll be interested to watch it unfold.
On YouTube.
So does anybody want to do anything with the resolution now?
No.
No, I don't, I don't.
I'm not touching it.
Okay.
Is it, could we possibly, in this, consider exempting the special residential overlay district, so that it really is something where it's more the historic district and maybe some other areas that we-
Well, I think you're going to have some historically significant structures in PGI. I mean, there's some beautiful homes over there, so I wouldn't preclude them.
I'd just make one more comment, and this is relative to what you're saying, Kim. One, the neighbor immediately to the- One, the neighbor immediately to the south of me, the very next one, they renovated that house, and, and it was a smaller house, and they kept the architecture the same, literally built an envelope up the code around the original house. So it looks like it was built in 1960, okay?
Wow.
And it, and it, the, the problem is, is they're two feet lower than me, so if we ever had a water surge, that's an issue, but that house, and they did that before Charlie, and it survived quite well, okay? And so, that, that's, there is, there could be something where some of these houses that might be on my block or Donna, you would want to preserve for the grins and giggles if there was a way to bring them up to, to go, and like I said, the one neighbor we had to immediately, did something in that kind of vein.
I, I will say that under the, the Florida Building Code, there are provisions which, if a structure is historically listed, um, it, it allows them to do that type of renovation and make the structure safer without running up against the 50% rule.
That's interesting as well, that's a good point.
So there's an advantage.
They're still low, though, they're still down there.
Correct, but they can make the structure safer from, from the wind-type events that we get, so if they value that structure, then, you know, that, that gives them an advantage.
Okay, we're not, we're not touching this today. What, next? What? What do, what do we want Mitchell to do with it?
Often, we bring an, an idea for an ordinance before you and ask for your authorization then to develop an ordinance to come back. This sounds to me like it, it, it might fit that sort of category of action by the city, so if, if I've gauged it correctly, then by consensus, uh, you can direct staff to prepare an ordinance for your consideration to amend the existing, um, Historic Preservation Code that we have.
But also an expanded Historic Preservation Plan.
I would actually like them to look at these properties, actually look and judge maybe now, the PGI area, which should be in and what should be out. Did they do that, house by house?
City staff did that.
Can the Historic Preservation?
And the Historic Preservation Advisory Board was, was provided with those opinions of significance, and no additional comments were made at that time. Certainly, we can go into a more detailed analysis in smaller chunks, so that they can look at each property individually, uh, in small batches, and come up with a, a concurrence or a difference of opinion on each of those with staff, and we can modify the forms and...
And then you can convey to them, you know, our concerns about the property owners. Tom?
Correct.
If you set off in a direction of we displacing other projects that might be as important or even more important, that urban design should be involved in?
Um, certainly, from my perspective, this would be an important project, something that we've talked about doing for many years, um, and certainly, in terms of doing this Historic Resource Survey update, part of the impetus of that initially four years ago was to bring these questions to light, because in the current, uh, code, and in the current list of properties on the Florida Master Site File, there are many structures which we are required to, um, to make those applicants get a certificate of appropriateness, uh, application, which we really shouldn't be reviewing those properties at all, because it says right there on the form that they have no value from a historic perspective. So we're already have red tape and bureaucracy imposed on property owners for structures that are, it's inappropriate.
And it's wasting your time also.
Correct.
And I think in the past, I mean, that's what I'm saying with the Historic Preservation Board, they really realized that, you know, they could have their opinion, but they really weren't, they're not a strong board, like, like planning or something like, not that the people are not a strong board, don't misunderstand me, but their, um, their opinions and their va, the value hasn't, you know, been given the weight I think that it deserves.
Perhaps we have not given them that.
Exactly.
That responsibility.
I agree.
And I would certainly agree that we can.
And that way, I think they'll take, like you said, you bring a bunch of them, wow, you know, they're not going to do anything anyway, so.
Are we under any time constraint with this? I mean, is there a, a time that we have to submit this to the state?
No.
So, I mean, it, it may take a little bit of time, but I think it's worthwhile, you know, before we jump into something, you know, with unintended consequences down the road, because you never know, you know, people change, things change, so.
Right.
You have some direction, I'm hoping?
Definitely.
Okay. Okay, we are moving on now.
Okay.
Thank you.
That short presentation, thank you for that short presentation.
Okay, next, we have the consent agenda, and I would like to ask council members if there's anything anybody would like to pull.
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay, and now it's time for citizens' comments. If you would like to speak on anything on the consent agenda, now would be the time. Approval of the minutes, a settlement agreement, monthly litigation report, and application and appropriation for the Police Department dive team equipment. If you, anybody would like to speak on any of those matters, now would be the time. You have three minutes.
Good morning. Julie McIlvery, PGI. Um, I did want to address the Mary Moulton situation. Obviously, this is a sad tragedy for everyone involved. It, it also does have elements of human error. Since the event, nu, numerous procedural changes have been implemented. Hopefully, we've all grown and learned since this event. In, in your discussions, I would like you to at least perhaps address whether or not you could confirm the amount that, in the settlement, that's coming from insurance versus out of the city budget. Also, um, if you could also address if the city policy has a deductible or self-insurance limit, that's, might be of interest to people. Also, um, does the city have a commitment for the insurance policy, if it is paying out the settlement, to renew? And if so, is there an anticipated premium increase? Then, some people were just curious also, why the, why the settlement is being put forth before the FDLE, FDLE report has been completed and discussed publicly, so I've got, I've got the utmost of respect for everyone involved, certainly, the police officers in the city council, but these are just some citizens' questions that I think might be helpful for people to, to learn about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, consent agenda items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next, we're moving into regular agenda. So first, we have budget discussion regarding automated water meter reading.
For the record, Dave Drury, Finance Director. First off, I want to say to Councilmember Devine, of the bottom of my heart and all our fellow employees, my fellow workers, you've always stuck up for us, and we really appreciate it and noticed it, so I had to say that. And Councilmember Kavanaugh, I didn't get as many phone calls as Howard did from you, but you said, you called me with some of the hardest questions to answer, and what a pain in the neck you could be sometimes, but we're going to miss you, and, and I just appreciate it. It makes me think, it makes me work a little harder, so thank you very much. We're going to miss you both.
Thank you.
I'm just asking for your approval to go forth and look into, I, we briefly looked at a couple of the main systems for meter reading. We've had all kinds of troubles. We, we privatized it because we couldn't keep anyone, meter readers, and the private, private company is having trouble keeping meter readers. Uh, I think they've got one out now, and...
And we've had issues.
We have had major issues. There are other companies out there, they are not doing any better, so we thought, now as the technology has come, come forth, there's two major methods. It's the AMR, is the drive-by, and you've heard of the drive-by, where they take a vehicle out with a laptop, and they go through the neighborhoods and read the meters. The other, which we think is old school, the newest method that we've run across is AMI, which is internet, internet-based, where it's instantaneous, we have, they build a grid, and we can read the meters at any time, anywhere, and if you're a Yankee that wants to know what your water, uh, use is, uh, they can get on the internet and actually see their, their water usage. Yeah, we cut down the complaints about, why is my water bill so high? And this is, this is not, I call them Yankees, because I'm a Yankee, come on.
That's okay.
But they, it's just, it works, um, it makes sense to at least look at it. It's not going to be inexpensive, it's going to be quite expensive, but this is our opportunity to take a look and see what we can come up with, and I'm just, uh, we did take it to the UAB, uh, they discussed it, and they showed much interest, and so that's all, that's what I'm here for right now.
I mean, in my mind, the internet is better than the drive-by, because then you're still only getting read once a month, or whatever the situation is, and like when we talked about, if you have a major leak, or you have a problem, you can see that.
Correct.
And I would say, go for, go for the, the better service, you know? The drive-by is kind of in the middle. I would rather go for the higher technology, where then, you know, people, information is power, too, you know?
That's, that's the route.
Our customers get the information, and it's all right there.
That's what Charlotte County's doing. Uh, Lee County is doing that, and I believe Collier, Collier County is going that route also, but we're going to, we'll probably look at both, just for pricing purposes.
Okay, that's fine, but I just feel like there's still issues with the drive-by. We still have to pay somebody to go drive by.
Yep.
So we're back in that situation again.
Gary was...
Gary.
I just want to say, if we were having this conversation 18 years ago, I would be having issues with the technology you're proposing, but this technology has been used in the industrial specialty chemical industry to monitor inventories, chemical feed points, chemical dosages and so forth. It is a mature technology, and it's just being adapted to the meter reading, and it's, it's kind of a no-brainer for me. I think this is the way we should go.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, you were talking about the cost, but won't we save money on employees and pension and cars and gas and...
Yes, uh...
I mean, over the long term.
Long, long haul, yes.
Long, long haul. I mean, I, I really think that's, we're going to go there anyway, and we're probably never going to get it any cheaper than we're going to get it right now.
Gary.
But also, with this technology, we are also bringing an additional value to the customer when a pipe does break.
Sure.
Or any one of a number of things, even though it's not the least expensive, that doesn't mean it's not the system with the most value to our customer citizen base in that regard, and, and that's where I mean, you know, it, it can, if, if we help citizens with three or four, uh, issues a year, it's brought a great value and in a comfort to the people that never needed, needed the issue, just they know.
And that was, uh, had a lot to do with, and I call them Yankees, excuse me, Howard Grimace when I said Yankees, but we have had people, we have had people, um, that would have liked to have had an opportunity to check, and, and I know that they're set up, that they can be, uh, they can warn you if something is going on, if you're using water. If, if you're using water at your house and you're 1,500 miles away, and nobody's supposed to be in your house, then there is possibly a warning system that could tell you, there's somebody in your house using your water, and, or there is a leak, and that's what, we liked it. I'm, I'm not saying we didn't like it, it's just, we're going to have to see what kind of money we're talking, and then we come back to council, and, uh, we'll go back to UAB and discuss what we found, and that's where we're, that's where we're headed.
Nancy?
Absolutely, you're right, next step, absolutely.
Good.
It's the information that is important, like you just suggested, having, um, triggers that may then give a warning, um, all of a sudden, somebody's water level is up, we can be proactive in calling them and letting them know, oh, you have a water problem in your home, and they don't even know it.
Right.
Because until they get the, today, until they get their water bill, they don't know.
And we wouldn't be the beta test site by any means, as Councilmember Warren says. This has been going on quite a while.
This technology is 20 years old, it's been maturing over 20 years.
Yes, it has.
It's not even, it's not even worth a long discussion or debate.
Not just for water, for other utilities, too. You know, FPL, and I know cities that own their own electric utility have automated, automated systems, so it's...
All right.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Move ahead.
Tom's going to be calling you next week to find out, find out an update.
Don't hold your breath, Dave.
Okay, next, we have purchase of a citywide voice-over internet protocol phone system from Veritex Consulting.
Yay, a new phone system.
We're just asking, we're asking you to approve the, the bid that we're recommending, so we can get on with it.
Move approval.
Get on with it.
Before it goes down.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second, to approve the purchase of the, of the phone system. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, we're going to just take a quick five-minute break, we'll be back at 10:50.